The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, August 14, 2023. The first line of business is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held July 17, 2023. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Your Worship.
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Thanks, Your Worship. There's no additions from administration tonight.
Counsel, seeing none, we move forward. There's no public hearings and notices, no delegations, proclamations, or petitions, no reports to standing committees. We have the consent agenda, which includes the council receivable report for June, casualty activity report for June, building department report for June, July, public works report for July, water treatment plant report for July, and fire department report for July. Do you have a motion to receive?
I can make that motion, Your Worship. I can second that motion, Your Worship.
Discussion, seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. And those reports can be all seen on our city website. First motion, accounts payable, if you would, please.
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $2,181,640.51 from July 1st to July 31st, 2023 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Building official appointment, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. So we have a report, just going through appointment of billing officials from PBI. So the city of Weyburn currently contracts professional billing inspectors, Inc., which is PBI, provide qualified licensed billing officials that administer, regulate, and enforce billing codes and standards. There are three primary classes of licenses under which billing officials are authorized to provide plan, review, inspections, enforcement services categorized by major occupancy and size of buildings. So we have Class 1, which covers 1 and 2 unit dwellings. We have Class 2, it covers any billions that fall under Part 9 of National Billing Code, including Class 1 and application of National Energy Code of Canada and Buildings to Part 9 Buildings. And then we have Class 3, which covers all billions under the NBC, including Class 1 and Class 2 and application of the NECB to all Buildings. So under the subsections 16-2 and 16-3 of the Construction Code Act of 2021, the municipality has the authority to appoint licensed billing officials. The following are qualified licensed billing officials employed by PBI that provide services to the city of Weyburn. So we have Doug Mulhall, who's a Class 3, Virginia Shepley, who's a Class 3, Bob Baker, who's our Class 3, Amanda Kaufman is a Class 2, Walter Schrader, who's a Class 1, David Kindred, which is a Class 1, Josh Nitz is Class 1, and John Dooley is a Class 1. So it's a recommendation from us as administration that council appoints the following people as licensed billing officials for the city of Weyburn. So again, all the names I listed before.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'll make the motion. As set out in Section 16-2 and 16-3 of the Construction Code Act of 2021, the following people be appointed as licensed building officials for the city of Weyburn. Douglas Mulhall, Saskatchewan Class 3 Licensed Building Official; Virginia Shepley, Saskatchewan Class 3 Licensed Building Official; Bobby Barker, Baker, sorry, Saskatchewan R. Class 3 Licensed Building Official; Amanda Kaufman, Saskatchewan Class 2 Licensed Building Official; Walter Schroder, Saskatchewan Class 1 Licensed Building Official; Dave Kindred, Saskatchewan Class 1 Licensed Building Official; Josh Nitz, Saskatchewan Class 1 Licensed Building Official; and John Doole, Saskatchewan Class 1 Licensed Building Official.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion, seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Director of Leisure, Memorial Park Flagpoles?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the flagpole situated outside City Hall are in need of replacement as they're no longer functioning properly and have experienced damage over the years that they've been there. This project was identified during the 2023 capital budgeting process with $60,000 allocated towards the removal of the existing poles and the installation of five new poles in Memorial Park located just adjacent to City Hall, which was identified as a more suitable area to allow for proper placement and installation purposes of the new poles. So following an engagement period with the stakeholders of the park, a request for proposal was initiated and posted on the city of Weyburn website and SaaS tenders on June 21st with the closing date of July 14th at 1:00 local time. So we received one bid from John Halbert Construction with a bid price of $49,800. So although the leisure services department only received one bid on the project, we're confident that the pricing received is fair as it's in alignment with the budget estimates that we had at the start of the year. We're also confident in the quality of work provided by John Halbert Construction as we've worked with them frequently in the past, and it's always been done to a high level. The new installation of the five flagpoles will provide the city with a greater flexibility and convenience pertaining to the future flag racing events and stakeholder activities. As agreed upon by our stakeholders, the new flagpoles will be placed on the south and the north sides of the monument, angling in a southeast and northeast direction with consistent spacing between them and room for expansion to a sixth pole if we ever desire to do so. So a really rudimentary map for you, just kind of outlining the location of the park that they will be situated in should this go through. So based on the full bid assessment, the leisure services department recommends that John Halbert Construction be awarded the supply and installation of five new flagpoles in Memorial Park at a cost of $49,800 plus applicable taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'll make the motion that the bid of John Halbert Construction for the supply and installation of five new flagpoles in Memorial Park at a cost of $49,800 plus applicable taxes be accepted as recommended.
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
Discussion, go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. Andrew, I noted in your report, we just want to give people kind of a timeline. Is there some concerns with the supplier on this, or do you think we'll be able to get it done in a fairly timely fashion?
We're hopeful that we'll get it done. Of course, ever since the pandemic, supply on things has been tough sometimes, but we're hoping that with approval of this, we can notify our contractor tomorrow and they can get them on order right of ways and we'll have them done before winter sets in. That's hopeful.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, yeah.
Thanks.
Paul, sorry, Your Worship. Just follow up to Counsel Richard's question, is this something that has to be done before the snow flies, or can this be done in the cold?
I think it all depends on when the snow falls and what the temperatures are at and what the ground conditions are like. With pouring concrete, you want decent weather, though, so there'll be a bit of a rush, to be honest, to get this done by the end of the year, but we're hopeful that we can achieve it.
But we're not taking the flags, another flagpole down until these new ones are ready?
Yeah, we'll make sure the new ones are installed before we remove the existing.
Okay, so it doesn't go, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Andrew, sorry, I should have asked this before, but $60,000 was allocated for the removal of the poles as well as the installation of the new ones. Is John Halbert going to be taking care of that as well?
Yeah, so that's all in the bid price, the installation and the cleanup and the groundwork for the old side as well, yeah.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Director of Engineering, the 2023 storm water pipe inspections, request for proposal.
Thank you. So the city of Weyburn storm water pipe inspections are required for managing infrastructure assets and for ensuring operational environmental performance of the network. The scope of services for performing the 2023 storm water pipe inspection program includes conducting CCTV, which is just basically videoing of the inside of the pipe, laser and/or sonar inspections of select pipe segments, and a submission of a comprehensive condition assessment and technical report of the current storm network. The 2023 budget has allocated $50,000 for utility inspections. On July 5th, the request for proposal for the 2023 storm water pipe inspections with an option of a three-year contract extension was posted on the city's new online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by July 26th at 4:00 PM. A total of two proposals were received, so they're summarized as follows. So acoustic remote technologies, they did bid $72,827.87, which is over our current budget. So we are actually recommending that the 2023 utility inspections be awarded to acoustic remote technologies with the deletion of Fifth Avenue Northwest location pipe segments, and this will allow us to stay within the budget for $48,761.78 as per the unit costs submitted and the conditions stipulated in the RFP with the option of a three-year contract extension at the city's discretion.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I would move that the bid of Aqua Acoustic Remote Technologies Incorporated to perform the 2023 storm water pipe inspections as per the unit costs submitted and the conditions stipulated in the proposal with the option of a three-year contract extension at the city's discretion in the amount of $48,761.78 be accepted as recommended.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Questions?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jennifer, you were talking about leaving Fifth Avenue Northwest to another year. Will there be negative effects or issues that need to be addressed, or can that just wait?
No, that one was put in there because we do know that the hospital construction's going on and we want it inspected before the hospital reaches final phase of completion. So moving that one a year won't make a difference for us. It was the lowest on the priority, so that's why we were willing to move this one over some of the other higher priority areas.
Thanks, Your Worship. Is there a regular interval that we do these? Are these something that every year, two years, three years, four years? Or is it because of what's happened over the last few years with some big rains that made us go, we should probably have a look?
Yeah, so that's part of this, is it with the significant rainfall of last year, it got identified that we definitely need to take a look at our storm water network because it's not operating as effectively as we would like. So this is to find out exactly where issues are, because our biggest thing is we know where it flooded, but the problem is we don't know what area is actually causing that. So this is to give us a better idea so we can have a targeted approach to repairs and possible upsizing of storm drain networks. So this will give us a better idea and direct us properly.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, the last three weeks and the next two weeks don't seem like we're going to have to worry about flooding anytime soon.
Well, always got to be prepared.
Yeah, I know. Good time, good time to have it done. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Induction of bylaws, Development Officer Fletcher, if you would, please.
Thank you, Worship. So tonight, there's a zoning bylaw amendment application from CIC Asset Management that has been received, which is requesting that the properties located at 109 to 127 Towns Gateway be rezoned from R2 residential semi-detached to R3 residential multiple housing. These changes are requested to reflect the intended permissions for the land that were previously approved by council in 2013, but were not carried over to the new 2020 zoning bylaw due to a clerical error. The lands are located at the corner of King Street or Highway 35 and Fifth Avenue North. The Towns Gate development was intended to be developed as a planned group of dwelling units with several townhouse blocks, although only two of the townhouse blocks have been built to date. Staff have included 101 to 108 Towns Gateway as part of the amendment as the entire property is part of one condo plan, and the zoning needs to be consistent for the property as a whole, as the parcel was developed as a planned group of townhouses through the condo plan and development process. If council proceeds with first reading of the bylaw at this meeting, then public notice will be sent out in accordance with the city's public notice policy for the public hearing to occur on September 11th at the regular council meeting. So the property has changed ownership since the original development proposal. The condo units with townhouses built on them have been sold, and the current owners of the remaining vacant units have been trying to sell or auction the remaining vacant property. Upon inquiring with the city administration about the existing development proposal and the zoning of the property, it was flagged that the property was previously zoned R4 residential suburban multifamily when the original development proposal was approved. However, the property is now R2 residential semi-detached in the 2020 zoning bylaw. Property was rezoned in 2013 by bylaw from R2 to R4 to facilitate the development of the planned group of dwelling units. However, it seems the map amendment was not carried over to the 2020 bylaw, likely due to a clerical error in updating the maps after the amendment in 2013. Therefore, the current zoning is once again R2, which does not allow for the planned group of dwelling units that was previously approved for the property. In order to ensure the zoning is consistent with the current and intended use of the property, a zoning amendment is required to change the zoning of the property. Staff reviewed the 2020 zoning bylaw, and through the comprehensive review conducted in 2019 and 2020, the zoning bylaw was updated, and the R4 zone is now the mobile home zone, not the suburban multifamily zone like it was at the time of the original amendment. The previous R4 has been consolidated with the R3 zone to simplify the bylaw and is now the only zone in the 2020 bylaw that allows for townhouses. So the R3 was recommended as the best fit for the property to allow for the previously approved development and future development of townhouses to exist on the property. And there's a map of where the property is located and the aerial imagery where you can see only two of the townhouse blocks have been built. There's also a copy of the condo plan in the report. So the property is currently designated as residential on the land use designation map in the official community plan. There are several relevant policies to residential development, to locate residential development to be compatible with other uses, optimize the use of existing municipal infrastructure, identify existing and future residential needs of the community along the entire housing continuum. New residential development will, wherever possible, be contiguous with existing development. Residential areas will be provided with ready access to park and open space areas and of the Tadagawa Parkway through linkages from one to another where possible. The zoning amendment for this property to be rezoned from one residential zone to another, and so it is consistent with the residential land use designation and the associated residential development policies. The applicant has requested that the land be rezoned to R3 residential multiple housing. The R3 zone is intended to regulate the location of higher density multiple housing in new areas of the city and give a variety of options to encourage developers to provide a mix of affordable housing. Following is a list of the permitted and discretionary uses in the R3 zone. And then there's a map of what the zoning bylaw looks like for the surrounding area, and all of it has been designated as R2 as of right now. And then urban holding across the highway and around the greater development. So the Weyburn District Planning Commission, if council gives first reading to the bylaw at this meeting, then staff will bring the bylaw forward to the District Planning Commission for input. So council's options tonight, option number one would be that council gives first reading to bylaw 2023 3461, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the above-mentioned lands from R2 to R3 and direct administration to advertise bylaw 2023 3461 as per the public notice policy. Or option number two would be that council refused to give first reading to the bylaw and direct administration to advise the applicant of their refusal, and they would have to be based on reasons provided tonight. So the staff recommendation would be that option number one, council gives first reading to both to the bylaw, and that's to amend the zoning bylaw as mentioned above.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, Worship. I'd make a motion to bylaw 2023 3461, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2020 3412 for the purpose of rezoning the property of 101 to 127 Towns Gateway inclusive from R2 residential semi-detached to R3 residential multiple housing. If you read it first time, and further that staff then be directed to advertise bylaw 2023 3461 as per the public notice policy.
Worship, I'll second that.
John, would you wish to comment? Okay, do you have any other comments on this? Go ahead.
Thanks, Worship. Two questions, Janine, I think I know the answer to them both, I just want to be sure. First question, can you help us understand why this has to go to the District Planning Commission?
Generally, zoning bylaw amendments are supposed to go to the District Planning Commission because it's a change to our overall bylaw that would have had to go through them originally, so.
Okay, and if I may, second question, would there be to the existing residents there? Could, would, would this zoning change have any tax implications for them, any impact whatsoever?
I don't believe so. Technically, taxes are based on the existing use. Rarely does the zoning come into play. It's still residential zoning, so ultimately it won't make an impact on that yet.
Very good, thank you.
Well, yeah, no, thanks for all the work on this, Janine. And I think like, basically, we've just put this property back to where it's just zoned to where it should have been in the first place, so the use or anything hasn't really changed from what it was. So I think it's good to get this squared away.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. So then this will be advertised, correct? Very good. And brought back to council next council meeting?
September 11th, yep.
To me?
September 11th.
September 11th. And September 11th is our next council meeting. So we don't have to mention that for inquiries and announcements. No unfinished business, new business, Development Officer Fletcher again, special occasions temporary permit application.
Thanks, Your Worship. So a special occasion permit application and a temporary use permit application were received from Big Jim's Brew Shop to request permission to host an SLGA-licensed event on the sidewalk and road, specifically within the parking lane adjacent to 51 Third Street Northeast, which is Big Jim's Brew Shop. The event would be, would take place on September 14th between 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM with drinks served. Temporary fencing will be installed around the area. The application was circulated to applicable city departments for review, and no concerns were raised. The same type of event was held by Mr. Bedore in October 2022, and no concerns were raised following that event. So there's an image of where it would be located. So the zoning bylaw, Section 5.9 regulates temporary uses and provides standards for temporary uses with the following conditions: have adequate washroom facilities, adequate refuse containers, and the site must be kept clean. Upon completion, all structures associated material and signage must be removed and the site left in neat and tidy condition. Temporary uses are permitted for a maximum of three days, and the proposed temporary use is only for one day. So the options for council tonight would be option number one, to approve the temporary use permit 2023.004 for an outdoor licensed event on September 14th in front of 51 Third Street Northeast, subject to the following conditions: permission is granted for the closure of a portion of the sidewalk and parking lane adjacent to 51 Third Street Northeast. The applicant shall ensure access to abutting properties be maintained. Arrangements must be made for access to washroom facilities. Adequate refuse containers shall be provided on site, and the site must be kept clean. The applicant is responsible for obtaining liability insurance for the event. The applicant shall be responsible for repairing or paying the cost of repairing any damages that may occur during the duration of the event. Temporary use shall comply with all applicable city bylaws, including but not limited to the traffic bylaw and property maintenance and nuisance baitment bylaw. And upon completion of the event, all structures associated material and signage shall be removed and the site left in neat and tidy condition. Or option number two would be to refuse the temporary use permit for an outdoor licensed event on September 14th, and the reasons would have to be provided tonight. So staff recommendation, staff are recommending option number one to approve the temporary use application with the conditions listed in option number one.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I would move that the temporary use permit 2023.004 for an outdoor licensed event on September 14th, 2023 from Big Jim's Brew Shop be held in front of 51 Third Street Northeast, be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Your Worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
I'd only just like to make a comment that I think it's fantastic that somebody's putting in the effort to do those kinds of things downtown and help re-bidalize that, so.
Yep, absolutely, and this event was very successful last year despite mediocre weather, so fingers crossed it'll be even better this year.
Very good. Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. A while back, we had a citizens survey, and tonight, via our city manager, he will give us the results of this, city clerk.
Sorry to disappoint, Your Worship, it's me.
My notes were pointed here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, quick game.
A city communications officer.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm here today to give a brief overview of our ongoing efforts to develop a comprehensive strategic plan for the city of Weyburn. City Manager Warren is going to be running this slideshow, though, so I will be telling him next slide. In June 2022, city council, along with senior leadership, began working on establishing the groundwork for the strategic plan. This involved a SWOT analysis to identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and then building upon the insights of that SWOT analysis, a clear vision and mission were developed that council felt reflected the essence of our community. So our vision is a community for all, and our mission is growing through opportunity. Strategic objectives or areas of focus were also identified in this analysis. These objectives highlight the key priorities that will guide the city over the next four years, and those four areas are economy, growth, community, and governance. So to make sure our planning process is inclusive and representative of the community, we adopted the IAP2 framework for public participation. This helped us organize our efforts into different levels of involvement that suit each step of the process. We consulted with community partners and stakeholders on the strategic objectives, areas of focus, to make sure that they truly reflected a shared vision for Weyburn. Consultation was through an engagement session on March 7th, 2023 with community partners such as the Weyburn Chamber of Commerce, Weyburn Regional Economic Development, School Divisions, and Southeast College. We also designed a multiple choice survey based on the strategic objectives and circulated that in spring of 2023 to community stakeholders, including the business community, seniors groups, new Canadians, indigenous organizations, and more. Engagement efforts were also extended to the broader Weyburn community, and this is the citizen survey that we're talking about today. The goals of this survey were to gain public insight, refine strategic objectives, and identify gaps in priorities. And you can read more about those goals in the full citizen report, which will be available on the city of Weyburn website after this meeting. This survey was widely advertised through various channels, including our official website, social media, local media, and during council meetings, and we received insights from 336 participants through the survey. So we can go to the next slide. This is just kind of a recap of the results, and like I said, they will be posted on the city of Weyburn website after. So we have actively engaged with our community, hearing from 307 residents of Weyburn, 209 individuals who work within our city, and 44 business owners who contribute to our local economy. Respondents had deep roots in Weyburn with a significant 63% of those who responded with being a resident of Weyburn for over 20 years. So while we appreciate those who completed the survey, we do recognize the need for more comprehensive demographic data of our respondents to ensure a well-rounded representation of our population. Also, through the survey, we identified some key strengths, which you'll see up there. They make Weyburn a remarkable place to live, work, and do business. These strengths include our commitment to community safety, our geographical location, which is close to Regina and the US border, the accessibility of our trails and parks, a vibrant community spirit, and the overall affordability that Weyburn offers. I'm also pleased to share that the overall approval with Weyburn as a place to live, work, and do business is evident with a satisfaction rate of 55%. 45% of respondents were also satisfied with the city's quality of services. It's important- It's important to note that not everyone's perspective on quality is the same, so reflecting back on the survey, we can recognize that we hadn't provided explanations for terms like city services, infrastructure, governance, and other commonly used terms in our municipal world here that may have guided respondents through the survey. Additionally, we pinpointed areas of concern expressed by our community, notably issues are aging infrastructure, affordability, and the cost of living, as well as taxes and fees. Survey participants also shared their priorities with us. Improving infrastructure, enhancing city services, and ensuring financial sustainability are among the top priorities that were identified. In addition, we collected people's thoughts about taxes, which you can see there's 39 or 39% are in favor of enhanced level of service, which may require a tax increase, and 28% agree to maintain the level of service, which may require a tax increase. People who answered the survey had varying opinions about whether their taxes aligned with the services they received, so this situation could probably benefit from further discussion with the community as opinions are fairly balanced, as you'll see 37%, 32%, and 30%. So this makes analysis of that just a bit challenging. Survey participants have also voiced their aspirations for what can make Weyburn better. Their suggestions include better transportation, which includes better roads, sidewalks, public transit, just to name a few, expanded entertainment and recreation opportunities, increased retail and grocery options, and a revitalized downtown area. So further results, the full report can be found on the city of Weyburn's Engage webpage. Next slide. We also collected sentiments about the 2024 budget priorities. The responses have highlighted the importance of economic development, reduce city spending, maintain increased capital, increase level of service. So budget timelines will be presented to council in our upcoming September 11th meeting. And then next slide, regarding the strategic plan, we're encouraged to learn that 73% of respondents feel that the strategic objectives, areas of focus, truly encompass all the priorities that the city of Weyburn should be concentrating on. This is also in line with the feedback that we received during our consultation with community partners and stakeholders earlier this year. What the citizen survey identified were areas that the city can enhance our efforts, with respondents emphasizing the need for infrastructure improvements, cost control, and healthcare considerations. As we move forward, it's important for city council and city administration to carefully analyze the data and perspectives we've gathered during all steps of the strategic plan development process. The accumulation of the insights collected from June 2022 up to the present day will lay the foundation for the city's 2024 to 2027 strategic plan, which is intended to capture a shared vision for the future of Weyburn. We are on track to have the comprehensive strategic plan approved by council in the fall of this year. So looking ahead, our next steps involve council thoroughly reviewing the strategic objectives with a presentation scheduled for the September 25th meeting, and additionally, the data collected through the citizen survey will play a role in guiding the preliminary planning of the 2024 budget, which will be discussed at the September 11th council meeting. And I just want to say a thank you to everyone who participated in the process thus far. Everyone's input is valuable, and it's, you know, it's been a long process, I think, but overall, we're kind of at a good spot heading into our next steps. Do you have any questions?
I guess I'll lead off of it there. The one thing that I'll have to say, and that's always really important to note to people, as Premier Morrison says, that we are to keep in our own lanes. When they said improved healthcare, that is not lane of of the city, and I want to really emphasize that, yes, there are hospitals there, all we as the city are doing is providing the land and helping them, you know, get the infrastructure in there, but that healthcare is not, I guess, selling land if some doctors' offices want to come, but we are not, healthcare is not our part. Other than that, that was a great presentation, and it was a great direction to us to see which direction we're going to give council, and not only this council, but the future council coming up.
I just wanted to add to that comment, though. That was one thing we identified was like, you know, we didn't really necessarily outline, like I said, definitions, which would help with that as well, and I think just through my time working with the city as well, I think some people are confused on what exactly the city can do and cannot do, so that would be maybe a focus for us in future community engagement. And then also, I want to say it's page 10 of the actual report, we do have a disclaimer on there saying that the comments that we received are not the views of the city of Weyburn, and so this report is just an overarching of what the community told us. And so us hearing that healthcare is a possibility of a strategic focus is not in alignment with what we do, so we would have to inform our residents of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting this together, Paige, I think this is fantastic work, I love the way it's presented. Having gone through the numbers, I think the numbers are excellent, and most of the comments are positive, the ones that are not are by and large very constructive, which is also valuable. My question for you would be, do we plan on conducting the survey again in the future?
I think we're, as of right now, our kind of next step, we heard from residents that digital is how people are receiving their information, top one being social media, email, we don't have currently a, you know, an email that we send out as a city that way, but there's thoughts on possibly diving deeper into social media to follow up on some of these items, because when you see that the majority of people who responded have lived in Weyburn for over 20 years, makes you kind of speculate that maybe we didn't tap into a younger, maybe newer demographic with this survey, and I do know that social media is a place that a lot of people do follow us, so that would be maybe a next step that way. But I think we're just in the stages now of getting council's feedback on this survey and following the next steps for that, those September meetings.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship, yeah, I'd echo that, thanks for putting this together, these are a lot of work. I have some observations, but first question to you, Paige, the volume of responses that you got, or we got, or the city got, or the survey got, is that sort of in line with what you expected, that sort of percentage of the population, were you hoping for more? Obviously, we want 100% of the people to respond, but that just doesn't happen. So is this sort of par for the course, that volume of responses?
It's hard to say what's par for the course, because we've never done this before. Again, in my time here, I've been here for five years, I had kind of heard that if we hear from 1,000 people, we're on the mark. We didn't hear from 1,000 people, but I would say that 336 responses is good, and I would say that our new notification system really helped with that, because we saw a spike. We sent out a notification on the kind of day before the closing, and we saw a massive increase of survey respondents come in then, so obviously, as a communications person, I would always love to see more. I would think 4,000 would be unachievable, but I think that's kind of a number that would be like the top goal, but I have also heard 1,000 would be like you're hitting a, you know, 10 percentage of the population, so.
A couple of observations, I 100% agree with the mayor when he says that there are things like healthcare that are in there that aren't the purview of a municipal government. However, I do think that's, I appreciate that there wasn't a lot of context around some of that questioning that allowed folks an opportunity to go into some things like that, because when we do meet with with other levels of government, which we do regularly, this gives us, I guess, some data to say to them, 50% of our respondents have said, look, this is not good enough, we want better, even though it's not the city's issue, I think that's okay, because that gives us a good piece of data when we meet with other with other levels of government. Anyways, my comments too would be to the folks that filled it out, thank you for engaging with us, because we need your feedback, and it's very worthwhile, so we appreciate that. And we heard you, we need to do some more infrastructure stuff. Roger that. Thanks.
Laura?
Thank you for the report. I love to go through information like this, I think it's so informative for us. When you look at the data, I'm always interested to see what the next steps are and where we go from here, and especially doing it again to see how the data lines up and where we are from one survey to the next. As has been mentioned already about some of the information that's coming back to us, it tells me that how we inform the city what we're doing and what we can do is so important, and that we have to keep getting that message out, you know, with everything that we do, it's not just doing it, saying it once, but repetitively over the course of the year, you know, because there are times when, you know, you will see it once, but you you may not pay attention again, and to have those repetitive messages about what is occurring, not just recreationally within the city or that, but what we're doing with infrastructure and every other aspect within within the community is so important to keep people informed. Some of the things that we're doing already are great. The new system with the alerts, I think, is is a fantastic new tool that is really informative, and I would encourage everyone out there to sign up for it, because with what's happening, you know, with construction and and things like that, it keeps everybody aware of where those issues are within within the city, and that people can be aware of that, so thank you again, and again, thanks to everyone who filled out the survey, and I hope we can get higher numbers in the future.
Yeah, I think this is a good first step in what was mentioned as the IAP2 framework. You know, some, we don't have a formal framework yet, and that's in development, but I do think this this survey was a, and just the whole strategic planning process so far, the community or the community partner engagement session we held and the survey that we also sent out to community stakeholders, I mean, all of that data in and of itself is going to be so useful for you as council going forward, and so just being able to take the time to analyze that, and then next steps to like, public participation is a circle, it's not linear, right? So this isn't the end, I'm sure there will be more opportunities for surveys like this, and I don't think we've, I don't think we've burnt out our community of surveys yet, so I think we're just starting, and we're very lucky to be in that position, so I can see us doing more of this in the near future.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So I guess, do we have, if there's no further questions, just motion to accept, or not even, this is just a presentation class? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We have inquiries and announcements, let's start around, Laura?
Thank you, your worship, I have three, if I may. This past weekend was a busy one here in Weyburn, I had the pleasure of attending Tadaway Tree Day on Saturday morning. Huge shout out to Curtis Block and the Parks and Work staff, there were 135 trees laid out, ready to be planted, holes were already dug, they made it really, really easy, about 50 people came out, there was, you know, two-year-olds all the way up to 80-year-olds, it was really great to see that many people out planting trees, and my fingers are still hurting because I planted a few trees, but thank you, thank you so much to everybody who came out. Also Heritage Village Days was held this weekend, my house happens to be on the route, and there were a lot of people going back and forth, so thank you to all the volunteers, I wandered through, and there were so many great people just standing in each of the buildings, and they were informative and welcoming, so hopefully anybody who's coming in from outside of Weyburn felt welcome, and hopefully they'll come back. And finally, the Weyburn Agricultural Society is holding a movie night on Thursday, August the 17th at Exhibition Hall, the doors open at 7:30 with the movie Guardians of the Galaxy 3, starting at 8 o'clock. There will be a cash-only concession, it's $5 to get in, kids 5 and under are free, bring some lawn chairs, there will be limited seating, but come on down. All of the proceeds are going to the new Spark Movie Theater, so they're looking to have as many people as possible come down on the 17th.
Savannah Betcher?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, it's like, not only are we a community of all, but we're always, we're also a community from all over, and we have newcomers to Weyburn that have come here from maybe as short as 15, 20 miles, but also from all over the world. And in that vein, the Southeast newcomers and the parishioners of St. Vincent de Paul would like to, are hosting a barbecue and would like to invite all the newcomers from the past few years to McKenna Hall on Wednesday, October, August the 23rd, for an evening to sit and chat and welcome everybody, like say we'll have some barbecue and probably some beans and et cetera, so we invite everybody that from the city also to come and say hello, welcome these people to Weyburn, we're very grateful to have them choose Weyburn to reside in. If you are planning on attending, to help us with the food that's going to be needed, if you could RSVP to 842-2129, which is the St. Vincent office, so look forward to seeing a lot of people next Wednesday at 5:30 at McKenna Hall.
5:30, next one.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jenke, first?
Thank you, Councilor Jenke. I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to get the word out to the community. We are going to be going through a shutdown of both the Spark Center and the Weyburn Leisure Center at the end of the month here. The Leisure Center will be closed from the 28th of August to the 10th of September to conduct our regular maintenance that we do after every outdoor season, it's hard to believe that summer's already over, but it is wrapping up, so we'll be closed for two weeks there to get the indoor pool ready for the public to swim and to switch around for that programming. And then we are also closing the Spark Center from that same timeframe, from August 28th to September 10th. We are in need of some preventative maintenance that needs to be completed, and unfortunately, we just, we have to close down the building to get that done, to redo floors, to clean up entrances, to do some major painting, some repairs in virtually every area of that building as well, so just want to get the word out there to the public that we will be closed in that timeframe. All membership holders will receive an extension to their membership, so they won't see any financial loss with that, it's just something that we have to do, and this was the best time to do it based off of our usage numbers. All of our summer programs are done for the year, none of our user groups are yet active, and looking back at previous data, this was our least utilized portion of the building during that timeframe, so we're hoping that we can get everything finished up in the two weeks there and be ready to go for the winter season.
Mr. Jenke?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Andrew, I let him go first, because I figured he might answer the question I was going to ask, and he did, so very good.
I have, yeah.
Really?
Anyway, three comments here. Number one, there's lots of construction going forward, we're all over the, and I thank all the citizens for their patience, that's going, we're, as a city moves forward and we maintain it, we have a lot of the construction, we have to close these streets. Jennifer, do we, any timeline on 16th Street, 16th Street and First Avenue?
Yes, it will be starting this week.
Starting this week, and so they'll be rerouting and detours on that corner to be watching for?
Yeah, so there will be some lane restrictions, at times it will be fully closed, but we will have proper signage and detours in place, so.
Any other spots to watch for?
There is some still sideways sidewalk construction going on at Government Road and Railway Avenue, so we do have some sidewalk restrictions there, because there'll be new accessible pedestrian routes going on there, we do have some minor things that still have to be done on Mergan Street from a sideways perspect, a sidewalk perspective, and then we had, do have various road restrictions just in kind of all over the city, because we are doing valve and hydrant replacements, so those kind of come up, those are kind of one to two days, and they move on, and then they will also be starting Duncan Drive this week, so residents in that area will see some traffic restrictions. Fifth Avenue North is closed, and it's only open for local traffic for the residents that live off of Fifth Avenue, so that one is closed, and it is closed till October, and that is for construction for the hospital, the water main looping there, so they do have that closed as well, and I think that's most of the big ones.
That's a lot of the big ones, that's a lot, so, very good. Going forward, there's two more announcements, city on, city of Weyburn celebrates its 110th anniversary, and they'll be serving birthday cake at City Hall on 12 to 1:00 PM on September 1st, so 110 years old is city of Weyburn, and we'll have some city archives on display there, so, which is quite interesting. We couldn't get any of the original signers of the documentation, unfortunately, but they couldn't. they are unavailable, previously unavailable. And in that light of, uh, part of the, although part of it, uh, I, the mayor, are going, I'm gonna finance, I, two writing contests. One is for uh, adults, uh, eighteen and over, and one is for youth twelve to seventeen. The writing contest will close for the adults on September fifth and it'll open for the youth on September fifth and run probably till uh, December fifth. And we want all aspiring writers to uh, come into City Hall, drop off your inspired short stories, uh, five hundred-word short story. It'll be on the city website and what makes this unique, and it was kind of like a uh, back in the days of when CBC Radio was really quite good and there, I'll say that, in my opinion. They had, would have an opening line, there's an opening line that you have that's on the website and it'll tell you what the opening line is and then there's a closing line. You have to end your story with this closing line. And in between, you fill in all the uh, open spaces. So five hundred words and using the opening line and the closing line. And it's a different one for the adults and different, and different ones for the youth. So September fifth's closing date for the adults and opening it for it is uh, the youth is September fifth and probably closing around December fifth, September, no, uh, October fifth, pardon me, not December, October fifth. And it'll be a hundred dollars to uh, finance by myself uh, to each of the first-place winners of this contest. So let's see some uh, aspiring writers and see how creative we can be out there. And I'll have a few of the uh, get, Laura for sure is one, gonna be one of the judges and uh, we'll find another couple of judges of who's gonna be the good uh, writers here uh, of our community. With that, uh, is there anything else? Because there's no, no, anything else to talk about, no? If you wanna talk, there's no notice of motions. And so with that, I'll say, goodnight and we will see you September eleventh and next council meeting.
If you'd like to share your feedback on the program you just watched, contact us today.